The WebEx is now live.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And thank you for joining us for the Cumberland County Board of Education Regular Board Meeting. And I'd like to call the order of this meeting. And if you can stand, please stand. We will have the Pledge of Allegiance by Jaclyn Brown, followed by the invocation by Dr. Mary.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Your heavenly Father, come before you once again. And we're invoking your presence, God, because we are about to do the business of our students, Lord, and all who are connected with our education in our school system. God, we want you to guide our tongues. We want you to guide our thoughts. We want you to have us to be on one accord with what we are supposed to do for our children. And Lord, it is in your precious holy name that we invite you into this meeting. And to that, we all say amen.
Amen.
Now, we will recognize individuals who frequently attend board meetings and any special guests or visitors. And we'll start by with Dr. Chevelle Godwin, Program Operations Specialist, Fort Bragg. Thank you for coming. Nancy McLeary, City View News. Cumberland County Association of Principals and Assistant Principals. Thank you for coming. District PTA. Thank you. CCAE. Are there any elected officials or other groups in the midst that may be present with us tonight? Next, we will go on to recognizing our ex-officios. We will start with Betty Hyatt. Betty Hyatt is an eighth grade grader at Grace Creek Middle School. She is a well-rounded student who consistently achieves academic success while making a positive impact within her community. Beyond the classroom, Betty actively participates in recreational sports and volunteers with children's church activities. Her kindness, leadership, and willingness to help others shine through in everything she does. Betty approaches every challenge with enthusiasm and demonstrates a true growth mindset, never afraid to take risks or step outside her comfort zone. Her positive attitude and commitment to excellence makes her a role model for her peers and a source of pride for her school community. The Grace Creek Middle School family is truly honored to have Betty represent their school. Betty, the floor is yours.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Betty Hyatt. I'm currently an eighth grade student at Grace Creek Middle School. I'm currently involved in the Student Ambassador Program. This program focuses on student leadership positions to aid the student body. Our duties are to take new students on school tours, help with open house, and help with the wear so money for all grade levels, and create special posters for our school. I also helped with the Bruins Academy. This is a three-day event that introduces new sixth graders to our school. Also recently joined Future Business Leaders of America and yearbook staff. I attended Garbey Farm Elementary School from third grade to fifth grade. While I attended there, I participated in all kinds of course and safety patrol. The things I enjoyed the most about elementary school was helping younger kids with assignments that they didn't understand. Helping others makes me feel good. I attended Grace Creek Middle School since sixth grade. It has been a wonderful experience. I started in sixth grade feeling nervous about being in a big building and learning a new material and a new schedule. However, looking back, now that I'm in eighth grade, it has been a wonderful experience. I've really enjoyed the whole eighth grade journey and middle school journey. I've shown progress academically, socially, and with leadership positions within the school. I'm excited about attending Grace Creek High School next year. I would like to participate in all clubs and organizations at the next level. I'm currently interested in becoming a kindergarten teacher. The reason I would like to become a kindergarten teacher is because I've seen the positive impact that teachers have had on me and how education is the key to success. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share my story of how education has had a long life effect on who I am and who I will become.
Thank you, Betty. Now, we'd like to recognize Betty's family and school family. If you would please stand. All right, next we have Abigail Cook. Abby is a senior at Cape Fear High School and serves as the Executive President of the Student Government Association. She is actively involved in numerous clubs and programs, including Student to Student, Beta Club, the Freshman Mentor Program, and serves as the leader of the FCA Program. Colts for Christ Outside of School. Then Colts for Christ. Outside of school, Abby works as a photographer, party planner, and youth worship leader. She dedicates much of her time to volunteering with the special needs community, attending the special needs prom, and participating in adaptive PE at least once a week. A true leader at Cape Fear, Abby presents ideas to the school administration and serves as a voice for her peers, especially those who may not have one. After high school, Abby plans to attend medical school to pursue a career as a pediatric surgeon. Floor is yours.
Good evening, members of the board. It's been an exciting and successful season at our school. And I'm so proud to share just a few highlights that show our students and staff are thriving in every area, academics, arts, and athletics. On the field, our teams have made us proud with conference wins in football, soccer, and boys cross-country and two state qualifiers representing us at the highest level. Our volleyball team advanced to the third round of the state playoffs, and we continue to be recognized as one of the most successful athletic programs in Cumberland County, winning the Maxwell Cup four years in a row and earning that distinction seven out of the last nine years. Our band program continues to shine, earning grand champion honors and first place in every major category, music, marching, general effect, color guard, percussion, and drum major. Our ROTC program also represented us well, bringing home second place overall at the Conway South Carolina Drill Meet. This year's homecoming parade reminded us that while we still move forward, we can still honor and bring back beloved traditions that connect our students, alumni, and community. In the classroom, our students are supported through robust academic and ACT review programs designed to help every student maximize their potential. Under the leadership of Ms. Lee and CTE, we continue to offer strong career and technical opportunities that prepare students for success beyond high school. Our Student Government Association continues its tradition of service through initiatives like Backpipe Buddies and Falcon Children's Home, building character as well as community impact. We're also celebrating our educators with the Beginning Teacher of the Year, a Teacher of the Year First Runner-Up, and a Principal of the Year finalist, all clear signs of excellence in our classrooms and leadership. We're proud to offer one of the highest numbers of AP courses in the county as well as innovative programs like Cult Connections and the Pipeline Academy, helping students find purpose and direction for their futures. It's a great time to be part of our school community, a place where tradition, innovation, and excellence come together. Thank you for your continued support as we keep moving forward and celebrating everything that makes our school family so special. And as always, cult pride never stops.
Thank you, Abby. At this time, we'd like to recognize Abby's family and school family. If you would please stand. Next, we have Ava Lithencum. Ava is an eighth grade student at Grace Creek Middle School. She is an active leader in her school community, serving as Secretary of the Student Council, reporter for TSA, a member of the National Junior Honor Society, and a participant in the Student Leadership University. Ava enjoys playing soccer and cooking in her free time. Looking ahead, Ava plans to attend an early college next year and pursue her goal of becoming a doctor. Floor is yours.
Good evening, school board. Today, I'm going to be talking about juvenile homelessness. I'm Ava Lithencum-Course from Grace Creek Middle School. In our city, we have a blessing of being around our strong military presence in a city on the move. However, there's something we often look over, something that some kids are dealing with in secret. Did you know that in North Carolina, there are over 25,000 homeless children? We need more people in our county to take action today and not tomorrow. We can't wait and have more children in these struggling times without a stable home to go to each night. Unfortunately, many people aren't able to afford rent, leading families to become unsheltered. In these trying times, the rate of population becoming homeless is growing. In America as a whole, 23 people out of 10,000 will become or are homeless this year. The most gut-wrenching part of this all is the impacting of students. From the National Conference of Legislative Data, they said each year estimate 4.2 million youth, young adults, and teens experience homelessness in the United States. In fact, in Cumberland County Schools, each year 800 to 900 students, who as students do not even know about are homeless. The steps we need to take to help our education and prevention. I'm enrolled in clubs as Leadership University. I'm in sports, and I want to become a future leader in medicine. As leader, we should show everybody to help our students. Don't, in my school, we have a motto, "Don't wish for it, work for it." On September 30th, 2025, our school board issued a proclamation naming November as Homeless Youth Awareness Month in Cumberland County. This is an honorable step, and we thank you. Tonight, we can all work towards ensuring that each student has an opportunity to succeed. Here's a quote I've heard and read many times before, "But now I truly understand these new open eyes. All children deserve a safe place to learn and grow." Thank you for all that you have done in your roles as leaders and as being on the school member board to accomplish this. Whether they are experiencing homelessness or not, we thank you for all allowing us to share education. Thank you, and happy finish your day.
Thank you, Ava. We'd now like to recognize Ava's family and school family. If you would please stand. Thank you, ladies. Let's give them another round of applause. At this time, we'll have Dr. Whitley to the podium for a special recognition.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
During tonight's recognitions, we will be acknowledging Cumberland County Schools' successful students, premier professionals, and a committed community member. When I call their names, I ask that they please join Superintendent Dr. Bracy near the seal at the front of the room to be recognized by members of the Board of Education. They will receive a certificate of recognition and take a photo. So without further ado, let's get started. With the following, Cumberland County Schools' principals, please come forward. Ms. Bianca Carter from Armstrong Elementary School. Ms. Katrina McKinnon from Grace Creek Elementary School. Dr. Kristen Edgerson, accompanied by Ms. Virginia Jika, the school's Assistant Principal from Seventy-First Classical Middle School. First, we ask that Ms. Carter step forward. Everyone, please join me in congratulating Armstrong Elementary for recently being announced as the national Title I Top Ten Distinguished Schools in North Carolina for excellence in serving students with disabilities. Congratulations, congratulations. Next, would Ms. McKinnon from Grace Creek Elementary please step forward? The school was recently announced as one of the national Title I Top Ten Distinguished Schools in North Carolina for closing the achievement gap across the school with 12 points or more. Congratulations. Finally, would Dr. Edgerson and Ms. Jika please step forward? This evening, Seventy-First Classical Middle School is being recognized for being the national Title I Top Ten Distinguished Schools in North Carolina for closing the achievement gap across the school with 12 points or more and the national Title I Top Ten North Carolina School First Place Recognition for Title I Distinguished Schools for closing the achievement gap across the school with 24. To add to that, Seventy-First Classical Middle also received a $12,500 stipend to attend the National Elementary and Secondary Education App Conference in Denver, Colorado in February, along with a school team and CCS's Executive Director of Federal Programs. Isn't that awesome? And we know that each of these schools has a mighty faculty and staff behind them to accomplish this great work. So would the faculty and staff of all three schools please stand at this time to be recognized? We certainly congratulate all of you on your hard work and dedication to student success. Congratulations. Next, would Seventy-First High School Arabic teacher, Ms. Najwa Ben Raymah, please join Dr. Bracy up front? Ms. Ben Raymah was named the Foreign Language Association of North Carolina Teacher of the Year.
Yes.
Congratulations. This award honors educators who go above and beyond for their students and demonstrate excellence in teaching, leadership, and service to the profession. Since joining Cumberland County Schools in 2023, Ms. Ben Raymah has brought language and culture to life in her classroom, inspiring students to explore rich traditions of the Arab world. Her dedication has led to notable student success, including one of her students recently earning first-place honors in the short story contest by the Qatar Foundation International. Her principal, Mr. James Lou Sayed, Ms. Ben Raymah, has exemplified a heart of world language education. Her passion, innovation, and her unwavering belief in the power of language to connect cultures and transform lives is truly impactful. Congratulations. At this time, with members of her family and school family who are present, please stand to be recognized. Ladies and gentlemen, we have another wonderful of the year recipient this evening. At this time, would Ms. Rocky Barnett from E.E. Smith High School please join Dr. Bracy at the front? Ms. Barnett must could not be with us this evening, but we certainly want to congratulate her on recently being announced as the 2025 North Carolina Year to Arts Educator Teacher of the Year for that organization. Can we give her a round? At this time, would Cumberland County Schools' Social Work Coordinator, Ms. Pamela Story, please join Dr. Bracy at the seal? This local legend was recently named by the governor to serve on the North Carolina Interagency Council for coordinating homelessness programs. Isn't that wonderful? The council promotes inter-agency coordination and partnerships on issues related to housing stabilization, services for people experiencing or at risk of homelessness and strategies to end homelessness in North Carolina. Governor Stein reinstituted the council on September 10th, 2025 with Executive Order 25. The council brings together state officials, housing and community development leaders, advocates, and other stakeholders to help align programs and funding, support system integration, and leverage resources to advance the council's goals. By serving, Ms. Story will be a voice, as she has always been. Her homeless children across the state. Once again, congratulations. We know that she will be a wonderful advocate. At this time, with her family members and work family, please stand to be recognized. Thank you. We now acknowledge our Extra Mile Award recipient for November. We know a recipient of this award consistently exhibits outstanding performance and inspires others to strive for excellence. So without further ado, November's Extra Mile Award winner would Mrs. Dotma Goncalbe, the Family and Community Engagement Liaison and the Communications and Community Engagement. Please join Dr. Bracy near the seal. Mrs. Goncalbe was nominated for this award by Ms. Marlo Mercer, the North Carolina, the NC Works Next Gen High School to Work Facilitator. Ms. Mercer shared a powerful example of the professionalism and collaboration that defined this evening's honorary. During outreach at the International Folk Festival, Ms. Goncalbe went above and beyond, staying six whole hours extra to assist Ms. Mercer in an event offering her a tent, tables, and chairs to make her set up easier. Ms. Mercer noted that Mrs. Goncalbe was not only friendly and resourceful, but she also graciously engaged visitors while Ms. Mercer moved her vehicle, ensuring that no one was left unattended. According to her, Mrs. Goncalbe's teamwork, generosity, and willingness to help transformed a hectic day into a smooth and positive experience. So we thank you for your professionalism, Mrs. Goncalbe. At this time, would her family members and work family please stand to be recognized? Thank you, and again, congratulations. Finally, this evening, we acknowledge November's Committed Community Support Award recipient. As you know, this monthly award is given to mentors, businesses, community partners, parents, and volunteers who dedicate their time and resources to assist schools and help students succeed. So with our November Award recipient, Mr. Terry Plummer from First Presbyterian Church, please join Dr. Bracy near the seal. Mr. Plummer has devoted his service to supporting the children of Walker Spivey Elementary School. Through First Presbyterian Church, he expanded snack kit ministry to provide summer food boxes, Easter baskets, and Thanksgiving meals for Walker Spivey families. His efforts ensured that students would have nourishment and encouragement beyond the school day. He has strengthened community partnerships that directly benefit many of these young scholars, from his work with Connections of Cumberland County to his hands-on involvement in the B Street Neighbors where many Walker Spivey Elementary students live. We just thank you for your efforts to help our students in the classroom and beyond. Can we give him one more? At this time, with his family and church family and school family, please stand to be recognized at this. Thank you, and again, congratulations. I have a brief announcement. The lights on a white Palisade with handicap tags are on the car. It's parked next to the building. So if that's you, we wanted to let you know. Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes the recognition portion of the board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Whitley. Next, we have the superintendent's update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ladies and board members, community members, I would like to share with you once again. As we move through November, our schools have been recognizing a number of important observations, observances, and special events. From cultural heritage celebrations to ceremonies honoring service and community partnerships like the ones you see on the screen, our students and staff have been actively engaged in these meaningful experiences throughout the month. As we look ahead to Veterans Day tomorrow, I want to offer a special word of thanks to our veterans for their service and sacrifice and to their families for the support that they provide. As we look forward to Thanksgiving break, I find myself feeling especially grateful this year. privileged to be a part of a community that consistently shows care, respect, and support for one another. Truly live and work in a remarkable place with so much to be thankful for. Cumberland County Schools will host our annual Choice Fair on Saturday, November 5th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at E.E. Smith High School. This event gives families a one-stop opportunity to explore specialized programs at every grade level, including themes such as science, the arts, and career pathways. At CCS, we are committed to meeting the unique needs of every student. Families will be able to talk with principals and academy directors, learn more about specific programs, and see why CCS is the best choice for high-quality, well-rounded education. The application window for the 2025-26 school year opens on Monday, November 17th, 2025. Families are encouraged to visit the CCS Choice website for details of our programs, eligibility, and the application process. We look forward to welcoming everyone to the Choice Fair and showcasing the opportunities that make CCS the best choice for every student in our community. As I shared last month, I have crossed my 100-day threshold. Today marks day 133 of my service as Superintendent of Cumberland County Schools. Been humbling experience to lead this district and to see the dedication of our students, staff, families, and community. Over these months, I've met with a wide range of partners and stakeholders, listening to students, principals, school leaders, office professionals, custodian support staff, who keep our schools running and care for our students. I've also met with members of the community, including NAACP leaders, Fort Bragg officials, PTA, family ambassadors, faith leaders, patronies and sororities, local government, elected officials, and local law enforcement partners. In addition, hundreds of stakeholders have completed the Bracy On Board Survey, including employees, parents, students, alumni, and community partners. These voices are giving us a clear picture of our strengths and our challenges. Our goal remains. Our goal remains clear: keep student achievement at the center of every decision and position CCS to be the best school system in North Carolina. Feedback from these first one hundred and thirty-three days will not sit on a shelf. It is actively shaping our strategic planning process. As we look beyond my first one hundred days, we're turning what we have heard into action through our next CCS strategic plan. This will be a community-developed, board-guided plan that sets a clear course for the next several years. Our partners, RTI International, are helping facilitate this process so it is thoughtful, inclusive, and grounded in data. Our strategic plan will establish clear, common goals so everyone understands where we're headed as a school system. It will help us prioritize and align our work so our time and resources focus on what matters most for our students. It will strengthen our accountability to CCS students, staff, and families. Most importantly, it will reflect the input of the CCS community and communicate a shared vision for our future. The strategic planning work will take place across the 2025-26 school year in three stages. In stage one, we will compile and review district data and engage the community, including data from Bracy onboard and early focus groups. That work is already began. In stage two, we will develop goals and metrics, gather community input on emerging priorities, and refine our initial themes. In stage three, we will communicate the draft strategic plan, finalize it, and bring it to the board for approval with a target of June for adoption of the 2026 through 2031 plan. Throughout all three stages, the steering committee will meet regularly, and the board will receive updates, input opportunities, guidance, and final approval. A key part of this process is our steering committee. This cross-functional team of internal and external stakeholders will meet throughout the 2025-2026 school year to guide the strategic planning process. Their role is to provide guidance, steer the direction of the work, and respond to stakeholder input as we shake the draft plan. They will also advocate for and champion the goals and priorities of the strategic plan once it is adopted. Community involvement is built into this process from start to finish. We will continue to gather feedback throughout this school year through focus groups, by listening to data, questionnaires, and other engagement opportunities. Our strategic planning website will provide information and another way for students, staff, families, and community partners to share input and remain informed throughout the planning process. Together, we will build a strategic plan that supports our shared goal of helping every student succeed and becoming the highest-performing school system in North Carolina. As I close my remarks this evening, I want to share a brief highlight from Seventy First High School's Annual Hispanic Heritage Night, a celebration that brought students, staff, families, and community partners together through the exhibits, food, and powerful performances. It was an evening filled with pride, learning, and connection. Please turn your attention to the screen for a short video from the special event.
Recently, Seventy First High School celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month with a third annual Hispanic Heritage Night. This night featured exhibits and performances with our CCS premier professionals and successful students. During this event, guests were able to see a highlight of the traditions, history, and contributions of our Hispanic communities.
This event provides our teachers, students, and families with an opportunity to learn from one another, build cultural understanding, and celebrate the beauty of this shared community.
I want people to take away that there's not just, not everything is the same. There's a lot of different dialects and cultures that come from Hispanic heritage. I think my favorite part was finally getting on the stage and like pulling it out.
I want people to take away the importance of celebrating diversity and the people, especially the people who live in the space around us. But obviously, I'm not of Hispanic descent, but I still took my time to prepare and perform for tonight's event, and this especially gives me the courage to go on and celebrate other cultures, maybe outside of this event, such as my own or various others.
My goal for tonight is to have other people learn about our salsa group dance that we're making and for them just to learn a little bit, maybe learn something that they didn't learn before about Hispanic culture. And working with people, different people that I haven't worked with before, because it's all people from all different Spanish groups that I haven't seen or haven't talked to ever, so I got to meet new friends, new people, and it's just been really fun.
Thank you. Board members, this concludes my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy. We do not have any registered speakers, so we're moving on to the adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
I'd like a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight.
We have a motion by Mr. West, seconded by Ms. Williams. Let's vote. Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, can I get a motion? Second. We have a motion by Ms. Warner and seconded by Dr. Hale. Let's vote. Thank you. Next is the discussion agenda. We have Auxiliary Services Committee report, Ms. Brown?
Everything is on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Student Support Services Report, Ms. Bell?
We met, and everything is on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Budget Finance Committee Report, Mr. West?
We two met, covered a lot of stuff, and we all agreed on it, so it's on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Policy Committee Report, Dr. Hale?
We met, and we have also concluded reviewing every single, every single policy in the policy manual, and we put the new policies in from the state, so everything is on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hale. Curriculum Committee Report?
We met, and everything is on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Jordan.
Legislative Committee Report, Ms. Warner?
We did not meet, but I would be remiss if I didn't think of our legislative bodies, especially our Cumberland County Commissioners, because this year, and it is on the consent agenda, but we received eleven point four million dollars, and if you'll check that out, you'll find that we now have the number-one teacher supplement scale in our region. So our teachers this year will benefit from our county commissioner's support, and we can't thank them enough, and I just thought that was important because sometimes consent agenda, you don't see it, but I do want our teachers to know that we not only support them, but we're putting money where our talk is.
And support staff.
And support staff. Our classified also, what their supplement has gone up six percent. So classified and our I had to mention the teachers because it's very important to me to let you know that in this day and time, Cumberland County Schools, even though we don't have a state budget, our county commissioners have done a fantastic job, and I do hope those teachers that took the opportunity to miss school will come back and realize that they need to thank our county commissioners and our board for everything we've done to make it a better place for them. And anybody that's left, come on back.
Thank you, Ms. Warner. Personnel Committee Report, Ms. Williams?
We met, and everything's on consent.
Thank you all. Next, do we have any additional business, which I don't see any? Closing items, we have board members' update, and remember to limit your comments regarding school system business and school systems events only. Anyone?
I attended, today is Monday, my days are, sorry, mixed up. I attended both the middle school and the high school honors chorus concerts yesterday. They were incredible, as always, and we did have schools represented. We had one middle school, Grace Creek Middle School, had students make it, and then in high school, Massey Hill, Jack Britt, and Grace Creek. So we had students represented at the state level, and they were quite impressive. The concerts were incredible, so just thought I'd mention that.
Today, Mrs. Bell and myself, we were at Howard's Learning Academy, and we went to their veterans program. It was awesome, and I got to mess with chickens, but they have a wonderful program there for their students. It was very well-received, and they're doing wonderful things over there for those students, and I just want to commend that staff over there for everything that they do. Sometimes they're the, not by us, but sometimes they're the forgotten crew, you know, and they are working tremendously hard over there, and the students are doing wonderful things, and I just wanted to give them a shout out. I had a wonderful time over there. Ms. Bell had to speak for herself.
They even recognize army spouses. They don't do that often. They leave us out.
Well, anyway, we got fresh eggs, so that's what I'm talking about. So I just want to give a shout out to Howard's Learning Academy.
Last week, Susan and Jackie and I, we went to the powwow.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Went to the powwow. That was awesome, too.
It really was. I didn't hear all the noise that you said we were gonna hear.
Well, that's because we were in the crowd. I mean, we were in the auditorium. When you're in grade, when you're in the high school, that's totally different, you know, because they have it at the high school coming up, right?
Graduation.
Graduation. But they have one there also, and it's a little on the ears, but I had a wonderful time.
And I also visited a few schools. Terris Sanford, I like what the new principal is doing, and we were invited back, me and Ms. Brown attended, and we also went to Margaret Willis.
Oh, yeah. Wonderful time there as well. We were busy.
Yes, this has been a very busy month. I got the opportunity to attend the JRTC Veterans Day Program, which was fabulous, very emotional, very motivational speaker that's there, and I think he really touched everybody, so I want to take, get a shout out to Ms. Murray. Sergeant Major Murray at Southview High School, because they put, and Dr. Whitley, they put on an awesome event, very awesome. And then I had an opportunity to go to, this is not a school, but the custodian banquet the other night, and Mr. Caesar and their crew and Mr. Coleman. When I tell you, it was another emotional event, just to see the crowd, those people that worked very hard for us, and the spotlight was finally on them. It was very broken to my heart, so. So we've been very, very, this board, I don't know if y'all know, but this board has been very, very busy. We have been out and about this month, so.
I attended both of them.
Yes.
No?
Okay. Thank you, Betty, Abby, and Ava for joining us and sharing your experiences with us tonight. To our schools and employees who were recognized nationally and at the state level, we value your service, commitment, and the excellence you bring to our district each day. Your accomplishments reflect the dedication, passion, and teamwork that makes CCS truly outstanding. Congratulations to each of you, and thank you for continuing to make us proud. Tomorrow is Veterans Day, and we pause to pay tribute to the men and women whose courage and commitment have safeguarded our nation's freedom. Many veterans continue to serve beyond their military years, whether as educators, mentors, volunteers, or parents, pouring that same spirit of dedication into the lives of our students. They help instill in them the strength to lead, the discipline to learn, and the compassion to serve others. Thank you for your service, your sacrifice, and the powerful example you set for generations to come. Our next board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, December ninth, 2025. We look forward to seeing you then. Please remain seated until we receive the all-clear. This meeting is now adjourned.